City Council meeting to order Monday, December the 10th, 2012. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Corzine.
Present.
Daughtry.
Here.
McManus.
Here.
Midnight.
Here.
And Mizell.
Here.
We stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear heavenly Father, we come tonight thanking you for the blessings that you have given each and every one here. We pray, dear heavenly Father, that each decision we made here will be for the better for the community. Be with our folks, dear heavenly Father, in our community that have lost loved ones, dear heavenly Father, or are sick. Not only be with the sick, dear heavenly Father, be with the caregivers. Be the ones on the council, dear heavenly Father, that have issues, dear heavenly Father, with health. Guide them, direct them, get them better, dear heavenly Father. We pray that you will be with our country, dear heavenly Father, as we move into this next year. Be with our armed service personnel, not only on foreign ground, but here in the United States, guide and direct their lives and bring them safely home. Be with us, dear heavenly Father, as we move through this Christmas season, dear heavenly Father, that for the ones that travel or have ones that are traveling into our city, dear heavenly Father, guide, direct, and advise, bring them safely home. Ask in our precious name. Amen. Need a motion to approve the last city council meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion second. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
First item on the agenda, citizens request. Seeing none, we'll move on. Mayor's report, motion to approve regularly scheduled meeting for the Metropolis City Council for the year of 2013. Movement by Mr. Carroll. Second by Mr. Daughtry. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item, motion to accept proclamation for National Drunk and Drug Driving Prevention Month, December 2012.
Make that motion there.
Motion by Mr. Corzine and second by Mr. McManus. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Carol, you have anything to add?
Not at this time.
About this time?
Maybe the only time we recognize you.
Next item is just an announcement. Long overdue probably with all the problems we actually had with our recycling venture. It's a great cause. It's hard to do anytime you've got a facility that's open to the general public where that there's not any monitoring, oversight, and things of that nature. It's just hard to do. Correctly, I'll put it that way. It's not hard to collect, you're just not collecting the right things. So, I am happy to announce that Holt Recycling has actually decided they're going into the recycling business. There is paperwork around. We're actually, as a community service, and some people might say, "Well, that's a private business, you're doing this." We are going to help get the word out because it is such a benefit for our community. They're going to take paper, cardboard, plastics, batteries, certain types of glass. They do have a list of unacceptable things, and each one of you should have got a pamphlet. One of the things that's going to be a great benefit is, especially at this time of year, is computers, electronics and stuff like that. There's no place to put them, and you can't put them in the landfills any longer. So, Holt will take electronic scraps and things like that. I guess there's reasoning for it, but there is certain things that they're not going to take what I classify as electronics. But anyway, make sure that you get this out to your constituents, and it is something I think that is, you know, I don't know what they can make, I don't know, I hope they make money off of it, but it is going to be a great benefit to our community to get this stuff off the streets.
So, Mayor, they, I just got some calls on TVs when this come out.
Well, before this, you could take them to Best Buy and places like that, they'd take two televisions. I don't think they would take anything over 32 inches or stuff like that. So, we were kind of handicapped. This will at least get them off the street. And if, you know, maybe, you know, we're still going to have a certain amount of them on the street. But what we may do periodically, just for nothing else, once every six months or whatever is, we may just take a truck and go through and pick them up ourselves. But my experience is that you've got something in bag, no matter what it is. We have people that go through the alleys weekly, and so they've got a place to get rid of them, and they're going to get some money for them, they will pick them up and take them off. So, that is a good thing. That's more than, maybe that's Mr. Holt's way of giving us a Christmas present for the community, but it is, well, you know, much needed. Next item for motion, motion to adopt modifying the date of the last regular council meeting of the month as follows. Pick one. This is going to be a little test. Number one, by canceling the meeting, or two, by rescheduling the meeting to such and such a date, it's seven feet. If you are determined to have the, if you're determined to have the meeting on its current scheduled date and time, then take no action. So, we're open for a motion, for however how you would like to do it. The reasoning for this, Rick actually called it to my attention. I didn't think much about it. Maybe it's selfish on my part, I'm not going anyplace. So, we will be in town, but there is people on the council that do have immediate family members that live out of the community, out of state, you know, and many, even if they don't, your family doesn't live away, it's a time, the way it's actually falling this year, that meeting would be on Wednesday night directly after Christmas and church. So, it might be something that we want to cancel that meeting to make it work, that if your family is in visiting and things of that nature, you don't have to take away from their time, spending with your family. And if you're traveling, that would keep you from having to come back unless you're working where you would, you might stay an extra three, four days with your family. That's, that's the thinking behind it. We're certainly open to ever what this council is ours.
We should, and this is for the month of December 2012.
Yes.
So, there won't be no confusion about the way it's written.
Second. As far as I'm concerned, we can.
I'll second that.
Motion to cancel.
Well, if something was to come up that we need a council action.
Here's what, here's what I suggest, and this is up to the council also, is we will have to pay our regular scheduled bills. Now, if anything unusual comes up, we'll do it just like we always do with an expenditure of calling at least four aldermen. Generally, I try to call everybody if I can get hold of them. If it's something that is out of the ordinary, that breaks, bends, or tears, that's got to be fixed before the regular council meeting or get estimates or something like that, we'll handle it like that, other than regular bills. So, we do have a motion, we do have a second. Call roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we will see you again next year. Corporate council, you have anything?
I do, just one little, one couple of quick comments. By now, most of you're hearing from your neighbors and your constituents about the postcards they're getting, about the zoning hearing. I want to, want to clear up a couple misconceptions. We've talked about this for years, literally, the zoning ordinance, the new zoning ordinance. This didn't start recently, and I know there's comments around, why are we rushing this through? That's what it always is. We worked on this for probably, and I'd say we, city council, the mayor, the staff, consultants, and a whole host of citizens have worked on this for probably six years now.
At least.
At least. It started with a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan involved at least 50 to 60 citizens who worked on that for a better part of two years. Moved on to the zoning ordinance, that, that work was done, oh gosh, over the last four years, multiple council meetings, multiple committee meetings, invited citizen participation. We've had many times when the gallery was full, back, I remember back during Ms. Brown, Mr. Corzine's father was there, and we worked on those things, and that tells you how far back some of this went on. The, so it's not anything new. What we, what we are trying to do, and what the focus of this was, and the reason for this, was the zoning ordinance that the city had dates to 1964, okay? And if you can imagine, if you think about it, all the things that have occurred since 1964, things that we couldn't envision in 1964, we have routinely today. Just by way of example, we have cell phones, and cell phones bring cellphone towers, which we had no regulation concerning towers. We, in 1964, there weren't CPUs, there wasn't internet, there wasn't fiber optic and things like that, and all of those things bring related issues relative to easements and right of ways, and keeping setbacks a certain distance so that those things have room to go in. Most of our utilities back then went overhead. Now, a lot of them go underground, so we don't have, there's a need for physical things like setbacks and easement, utility easements that go into subdivisions and plaques, which didn't exist in 1964. We have things like digital signs, for example. Digital signs can be a good thing, but they can also be a negative thing, and so we need to be able to use them properly, and those weren't conceived of. So, when you take rules that were written in 1964, and you try to apply them sometimes to things that are available in 2012, they just don't work very well. Somebody has asked about the extraterritorial jurisdiction. That's that mile and a half border around the city that zoning applies to. It's always applied there, okay? This isn't anything new, it's always applied there. Now, the fact is, under the old ordinances, we actually didn't have a lot of regulations for that area. So, the folks charged with enforcing those, the Lee Sherbys, the Penny Emerys, the Chad Murrys, didn't have a lot to go by, okay? They didn't, if one of these big industrial hog farms or industrial chicken farms wanted to locate there, so be it. Even if it was right next to Cedar Lane, or right next to Patriot Place, or right next to Fawn and Bullock, you know, nothing we could do about it. Well, we know from experience over the last ten years, what happens when you get big chicken farms, and you get big hog farms that come in and operate on an industrial scale, they cause problems if there's residents in the neighborhood. So, with the new zoning ordinance, we've done things to protect those types of places, you know? We've done things within this mile and a half where we can protect the Cedar Lanes, the Fawns, the Bullocks, the Wood Havens, the Highland Owes even, that exist on the edges of our town. The, we've also learned from experience that without good zoning and subdivision ordinances, we can get subdivisions that are built on the edge of town where property owners buy into this, or people buy into it, and they think that, well, you're buying into something, but we're always going to have good utilities, something that's going to hold our property values. That's not always the case. I mean, the prime example right now is Cedar Lane, with the folks that are worried about their streets, and they're, that wouldn't have happened necessarily if we'd had valid subdivision ordinances that were being enforced. And that's the kinds of things. It's actually to protect the integrity of the property, to protect the property values. Now, why did everybody get a postcard? Well, plain and simple. The statute which governs the kind of notice, and one of the process, and we've talked about this before, but the process for adopting a zoning ordinance or a zoning modification is that you have to hold a public hearing before you can adopt it. You send it to the zoning commission, that's who's been working on this for the last two years, the zoning commission, that's a group of citizens, not, no elected officials, no appointed officials, strictly citizens, been working on this draft for about two years. They've got it together, you have it in front of you tonight, and then they send it out for a public hearing to get public input. But the statute said all you had to do was publish a notice one time in the paper, and that's all the notice you had to give to the public. Well, the Supreme Court said that's not good enough about three years ago in a case called Pasalino versus the City of Zion, and they said it wasn't good enough. They didn't give a lot of direction, but they said you had to make an effort to notify the property owners, more of an effort. So, without giving much direction, the obvious is, let's send out a notice. And so, we took the file from the assessor's office of all the property owners within the city and within that mile and a half boundary, and we sent a postcard out notifying them of those public hearings. And that's what that public hearing is, it's a chance for the public to give their input. And we've had a lot of calls, and I'm sure you're getting a lot of calls, what's this about? Will it change my property? More than likely, it won't. Most places are residential, they'll still be residential. Places that are commercial, still going to be commercial. A few areas have more, for example, right now, we have four residential type districts. I think under the new ordinance, we may have six or seven, and all that has to do with the size of properties. We have a couple that are a little more common now called mixed-use zones, where maybe people have residents up on the upper floor and retail down on the bottom floor. That's a new development you didn't see in 1964. Might have seen it years and years ago, and now it's making a comeback. We've got a provision. We've got a general highway district, which, that covers most of 10th, Fifth, and Ferry. Now, those were primarily commercial zones anyway, but now it's a general commercial and a highway district. Can you still have residents there? Yes, absolutely, you still have residents there. But it, these things were designed to protect the integrity of everybody's property and the values of the property, and we have more specific rules. And like I say, when it comes to that extraterritorial jurisdiction, now we've got some rules that say what you can put there and what you can't put there. Up to now, it's been kind of a hit and miss guess, and so, it's always been regulated, this is nothing new, but now we have some rules that are easier to find, easier to look at and see what you can or can't do. And Chad has always been, well, he's very flexible with people, so when there's room for granting variances, there's room for granting exceptions and things like that where they need to be granted. Some things to miss, it's not about taxes, it doesn't raise your taxes. It is not about forcing you off your property, it doesn't do that.
It doesn't annex you.
It doesn't annex you if you're not in the city, you won't be in the city the next day because we adopted zoning ordinance. And there's, there's no mysteries behind it. What it will do though is, like I say, it will keep industries from popping up in residential neighborhoods. It'll keep strip joints from popping up in residential neighborhoods. It'll keep, it'll put them in the places where they need to be, doesn't keep them forbidden, it just puts them in the places they need to be, okay? And that, that's basically what it's about. But there, we have had some, people raised good questions, we've invited them all, and I hope you invite people that ask you good questions. By all means, look at the zoning ordinance, it's on the website now, so is the map, it's on the website, it's at the library, it's in the clerk's office, and I think we even put one down in the Chamber of Commerce.
And each one of these.
We've had a, had a couple of questions about signs. I've told people, by all means, come see Chad talk about signs, or show up at the hearing if you'd like to, and that's another thing. By law, we only have to have one hearing, it can last one hour, and that's it. But instead, we're going overboard, we're doing it two different, two days back-to-back, one night, one morning. So, we tried to make it very open, an open process, and make it so that the public can participate in the process. And with that said, you know, like I say, there, there'll always be people out there that are naysayers and that spread the rumors, but we're not going to give credibility to that.
Mr. Abel, I was going to ask you to come in on this very issue, but Saturday, a man presented me with a stack of cards, this thing, I'd say 75 to 100 anyway. Why should he get 75 to 100? I gave him my explanation. Would you explain that, please?
Absolutely. We, we didn't want to take a risk on leaving somebody out. So, yes, somebody that owns 75 properties probably got 75 cards, okay? The reason was, like I say, the state statute says you just publish one time this notice, which is basically what the card is, in the paper, but that's not good enough. The Supreme Court said that's not good enough. They said you got to make an effort to notify every property owner. But when we took the file, the electronic file, off the assessor's computer, we were able to sort it somewhat, and we could have probably eliminated some duplicates, but we were afraid in doing so that we might let somebody fall through the crack. And we, and rather than do that, Chad and myself and the mayor made a decision, let's just err on the side, the safe side, and make sure everybody got notified, even if they got notified once, twice, or 75 times, I suppose. But that's why it was, trying to comply with the Supreme Court's decision is what we were trying to do.
That's basically what I told him, but he, he wanted to know why the city council couldn't change this and what he could do. I said, basically, what you need to do, worry about the city council, because Springfield has them changing it back.
Absolutely, because the Supreme Court took this old statute and threw it out, so we're stuck with the Supreme Court decision.
This way, they won't be able to say I didn't get one.
There you go. See, in Pasalino, what happened was, this guy came back eight years after they'd already adopted this, and then got the court to throw out the zoning ordinance because they said he didn't get a notice.
That's basically what I told him, if you didn't get one for one piece of property, it'll probably be thrown out.
And that's why they tried.
Any other questions? Comments? Committee reports, finance committee, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, these are from the finance committee meeting, December 5th. We have these to bring forward to the council. We need to adopt a motion for the roof to be suspended and ordinance 2012-23 be placed upon its passage. It's a tax levy ordinance for fiscal year 2012-2013.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Mizell, second by Mr. Corzine. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to adopt, to accept the low bid in the amount of 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,649,115 dollars from Amarin for the combined sewer separation project number one, and to award a construction contract to Amarin Contracting Incorporated.
Second. Motion made and second. Discussion, call roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to adopt the ordinance 2012-23 as presented as a tax levy ordinance for fiscal year beginning July the 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013.
Second. We do have copies of that for anyone that would sell. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
A motion needed to accept or reject the renewal of workman's compensation and property casualty with Gower Insurance Agency Incorporated.
Second that motion. Motion made by Mr. Barfield, second by Mr. Corzine. Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, that completes the finance committee report.
Next committee, Water, Light, and Street, Mr. Barfield.
Yes, sir, Mayor, this was hot off the press for just a few minutes ago. This, Water, Light, and Street Committee meetings, and we need to adopt a resolution approving agreement with the State of Illinois IDOT concerning the resurfacing of US Route 45, Metropolis parking lanes, Speckman Street to 10th and Ferry Streets.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you.
Motion made by Mr. McManus and second by Mr. Mizell.
What are the parking lanes, just the?
They're going, well, we have to pay for the parking lanes. The state will pay for the resurfacing of the road. We actually have to pay for the parking lane.
I'm sorry, I missed that meeting.
Yeah, and it will be taken out of the field tanks. And they do ask for a contract before they start the process, so.
I'm sorry.
We do have a motion, we do have a second, any other discussion? Call roll please.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to adopt, to accept the low bid in the amount of 1,000, I'm sorry, 1,649,115 dollars from Amarin for the combined sewer separation project number one, and to award a construction contract to Amarin Contracting Incorporated.
Second. Motion made and second. Discussion, call roll.
Barfield.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Corzine.
Yes.
Daughtry.
Yes.
McManus.
Yes.
Midnight.
Yes.
And Mizell.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, that completes the Water, Light, and Street Committee.
That parking lane is a very good question. Would stand to reason if the State of Illinois is going to pave the road, they'd pave the whole road. They don't work like that. They classify as, the parking lane as a city of Metropolis for various reasons, some of them do have the utilities.
I will make the motion to accept taking action on the old bicker staff building.
Second. And what we'll do, we'll just proceed with that, with account, with the committee and the council's approval to see if we can't get some kind of a formula and get the blueprints and whatever from Joe and them and actually get somebody to try their best to mark, see what we've got.
With a proposal.
And get an estimate of what they're willing to pay and stuff like that. We will bring it back to the Waterlight Street Committee meeting before anything's done. Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to please the Waterlight Street Committee.
That parking lane is a very good question. It stands to reason, if the State of Illinois is going to pave a road, they'd pave the whole road. They've done more like it. And they classify as a parking lane as a city in the process for various reasons. Some of them do have the utilities personally in there, but we went through the same thing on the 5th street. But that is the way it has to be done, so. Anything else, Mr. Barfield?
Yes, sir, I'd like to please.
You're on a roll tonight, Mr. Barfield.
We're making heads away anyway, aren't we?
Next committee report, Insurance Committee, Mr. Barfield.
All right, sir, this also was discussed December 5th, had a good attendance on the insurance committees, through everyone, and had quite a presentation and everything, and it worked out thanks to our advantage. But anyway, I will make a motion that we adopt and amend the health insurance plan to provide that one office visit with a physician, including lab work involving a blood panel per year shall be covered in full without a deductible or copayment at a PPO provider regardless of whether it is preventative care or not.
Second.
Question. Are we going to step in our bounds? It's my understanding that this insurance committee was given autonomy in this here. We've discussed this one year ago today.
And you didn't vote on that.
We did not vote on that.
You didn't vote to give them autonomy, it was brought up. The plan itself is a part of a contract that the city council has made with.
Okay, so now we're asking eight aldermen to vote on something that they have no knowledge of whatsoever. I, I really have a lot of difficulty with this. I mean, I was there, because I'm part of the insurance committee meeting, but Ms. Brown's not on that committee. She's not aware at all what we're voting on. Mr. Alderman is not having any idea.
What are we voting on?
I haven't voted yet.
Okay, and without a presentation and all that background material, I really have trouble with this, I'm sorry, and I did last year when this came up. I mean, if, if this is council business, then they should be all present or at least invited to that meeting, this is.
And I, I understand what you're saying.
We're changing this program.
And I'm not sure that I disagree, but I, the way I look at it, and I'm not a lawyer, he, he tells me all the time I'm not, but.
We've had this discussion.
Why, why, why is it any different? Is at the Waterlight Street Committee, you have a committee of four people. And Mr. Corzine, Mr. McManus, Ms. Brown, and Mr. Daughery are not present. So we didn't, we, and I, I discussed also, and that four-person committee decides that they're going to make a motion, and we're asking these four to vote on something that they weren't aware of.
And I would like to reiterate too, if, if I'm not here for a meeting.
We need to fix.
I will get information from that gentleman up there about what's been going on and what's been talked about. So I'm speaking for myself. I haven't voted on anything, but what would be the difference on this compared to anything else?
I don't see any difference myself, well, gosh.
Well, monetary difference, we're giving away some money.
But there's explanation, there was a four-page pamphlet put and everybody's to ask, and it should be in there. And that's not an excuse, but I mean, at least the information is there, they can be deployed. But there was no objection brought up this during the meeting.
No, I mean, the committee was all for it.
It was all for it.
I don't have a problem with it, this is a great item, this is what we voted on. It was unanimous voting, as a matter of fact, if I remember correctly.
It was.
But even still, I mean, you know, I mean, maybe you're right, Mayor, maybe this is no difference of opinion, but like Mr. Daughery said, he's invited to committee meetings if he can make it. If not, then he can dig it out, find it out by talking to the people.
And this is a, I mean, it is coming out of the insurance committee, but it was, it's been notified, it is a public meeting. If they decided they didn't want to participate, maybe they should have been there. I haven't heard anything negative at all coming from committee meetings. I think it's a great thing, but.
We were there, and those of you that weren't there, everybody was in favor of this, there's no, there's no objection to what's happening here at this point. I just, you know.
So what are you saying, Bob, what is it that?
I mean, we're changing our plan, see, is what I'm saying. And I want to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Okay.
I mean, you know, just like tonight, we bid on that contract, you missed the meeting, you couldn't help that, and, but you trusted us.
Because of work.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, so, but you trusted us, so, I mean, we're asking you to trust us here again. But I want to make sure that everybody's aware of this situation.
All right, we do have a motion, we do have a second. Do we have any other discussions, our concerns?
Well, what this, what this is, Master, yeah, see, they're adding a, a blood test.
Right.
That's, that's the whole point, they're adding that to the, to the policy.
Well, in most, you know, in most physicals, the concern of the insurance committee and the employees and was that in most instances, a blood test at your annual physical or whatever is included in your wellness, which you get at no charge. But the blood was not in there in the original contract. And really, that's one of the few things that slipped through or whatever. So on the side of error, at the insurance committee, we had a full house, I think there was one person that was absent off the committee, and there's about twelve on there, was that they would like the company, Mr. Andreas actually addressed it, that they felt like that needed to be added to the insurance policy, which they did. And that was one of the few things that I know of that was actually kind of slipped through the cracks, and we found out. And there's going to be other things, I mean, and we don't want to get into another insurance committee meeting, but there's going to be other things that Mr. Abel and I have talked about some things, and we actually talked to some of the, the people on the insurance committee. Last year was a learning experience. This year is going to be even more of a learning experience, and I look for, for as good if not better savings because we are all learning a little bit about prescription drugs and mail ordering and whatever. So I do believe it's going to get better, and we're going to probably make some changes through the committee or, or make a recommendation that some things are changed for the benefit of that insurance program and our, our workers.
Now, does our review, does it go up?
Actually, it's one of four percent.
Isn't it basically like any other committee, committee is meant to get together, discuss the details, come back to the council with a recommendation. The committee can't actually take any action, only the council. So I mean, this is really no different than anything else. The committee is brought back as a recommendation to say, hey, we suggest you guys adopt this, just like if it was the zoning and planning or the water, street and light or the finance, they all come back and say, hey, this is what we're suggesting. And we either take it and run with it or not. It's, you know, we have to make the decision.
There is a change.
Money-wise here, we got four percent increase, and that's what he's telling us we need to expect.
On the total project, but it's not going to increase the individuals payout of your property.
No, we're just talking about cities' expense at this point.
And it was quoted that we did save over five hundred thousand dollars over the first year of previous insurance.
All I'm just saying is that I, you know, I think sometimes you need to make everybody aware. And it's difficult to do because that's what went on, they had two meetings that lasted, what, an hour and a half, two hours each?
Each.
I mean, you know, and that's tough, I know, and I just want to make sure that some of you people are aware that this is going on.
That's what I keep saying, we need to record them all, but. All right, we do have a motion, we do have a second, call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yeah.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Did everybody vote?
Yeah, yes.
I will make a motion to amend the health insurance program to modify the terms of reinsurance policy as follows. A, to increase the individual stop loss deductible for forty thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars with a twenty-four, twelve contract. And B, to modify their aggregate stop loss provision to a twelve, twelve contract. That was explained in detail too, so if there's any questions on that, we can rectify that.
Any questions? Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, I think that takes care of business.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barfield.
Thank you.
Department heads, Ms. Walsh?
Nothing at this time.
Chief Massey?
Nothing, sir.
Emergency service?
No, sir.
Chief Morris? Ms. Cheryl?
Actually, I do have something to report.
Okay.
And my team, as Mr. Barfield said, is hot off the press as of last Friday.
All right.
For the, the federal highway administrator grant that we've got for the Principal Port Mass Act, this summer we had to have an archaeological study done, which we got that back in August, and there was no findings. So then they had to do an appraisal, a new appraisal of the property since it was more than three years old. And IDOT actually paid for that. And so we got that back, and then with the appraisal, there has to be, like any kind of contractor, that has to do an appraisal review. And so I contacted a gentleman, his name was Robert Dunn, who agreed, and this is a twenty-five hundred dollar value, that he agreed to do free of charge. And we were supposed to have that back in November, and he has been in the council. And as of last Friday, he told me that we would have that review appraisal back this week, or by the end of this week. So that will go to IDOT, and then IDOT has to, to complete what they call negotiator notes and then do a parcel and property compliance report. And then that will be sent to Springfield, and then the next step will be to complete the contract, the grant agreement contract between the state and Principal Port Mass Act, and then I think we've jumped through every hurdle, hopefully.
That's good news.
So we're very, very close. So the review table truly is our last, least, uh, we actually owe.
All right.
Was it, was it less?
It was actually a little more, I think.
It was, yes, it was just slightly more.
Not, not, not enough to, you know, not enough to worry about, but it was greater.
Is this, uh, means that Principal Port Mass Act will receive their grant then?
Well, if all the hoops have been, the, the hoops is all been jumped through now. Now it's in the final phase of, of just review and things of that nature, and, yes, I, I think it is.
Who, who's holding that check?
The state.
It's federal money?
It's, it's actually.
Is it the federal highway administration that goes down to the Department of Transportation?
But it has been appropriated.
Yeah, that has been.
Oh, actually, it was appropriated, it was actually appropriated two years ago. But whenever, whenever there's land acquisition, there's just a lot more hoops to jump through than what we really do in real life.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anyone else? Department head? Old business? New business?
Mayor, I've got one thing. We got a call on Market Street. One, at one time, did we have lights on the poles up there as far as the lighting?
We did.
Is, is concerned about, merchants was concerned about where they at now.
They were about forty years old until we buy some new ones, there will be more lights up there. And, you know, we have enough to go on the streets from one end to the other end, and I think it'd be great, you know, if we had, it doesn't have to be. The ones that had up there were never good ones, they were, we, we kind of put them together five, six, seven years ago out of pieces that was actually thrown away and they wound around the poles.
Right, yeah, had the greenery on it.
You know, they, they just weren't very good quality, I think it'd be great if, after the first of the year, if we have any funding in the general, they actually, each light company will put out what they call a closeout of the year, the stuff that was manufactured the year before and stuff like that, and most of the time, you can save at least forty to fifty percent. I think it'd be great if you could, not as, as large as what's on the poles, but, you know, candy cane or something that could actually go on each one of them, I think it'd be a great thing. I think it dresses up without falling any salt on any wounds or anything like that. I think it goes back to the same thing of your uptown community with the flowers and stuff like that in the summertime. I think it gives a different atmosphere to it, and I think it'd be great if we can see ourselves, if we can look at it as the information starts coming in, and it will come in, I'll start getting literature right after the first of the year.
I think that'd be.
And we'll bring it back to a Waterlight Street Committee and, and let everybody look at it. And if we can afford it, we'll pick out some things, and we'll be able to do that next year. And maybe even buy a few more to go on the, the poles there, because it does, it does make your community.
Makes a big difference.
True does, we need to do that.
Miscellaneous reports. Finance reports, payment of salaries, payroll and contract bills.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. Mizell. Payment of miscellaneous bill, I'm sorry, call roll.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Payment of miscellaneous bills.
On that as well?
Second. Moved by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. Mizell. Call roll, please.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have no need for an executive session. Reminder, Tuesday, tomorrow, Condon Building Committee at one thirty. Now, we're always used to having our, we want that, we're going to have this one at one thirty, so remember that.
There's also a trisam meeting in the morning and noon.
That's one reason we moved it back, is because of the trisam meeting. Any motion, Mr. Barfield? We do.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Corzine, second by Mr. Mizell. Before we have a roll call, I want to personally hope each of you have a good evening, so happy holiday, a safe holiday. And we'll see you, I hope I see you all before next year, but anyway, have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barfield?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Carroll?
Yes.
Corzine?
Yes.
Daughery?
Yes.
McManus?
Midnight?
Yes.
And Mizell?